Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting; a breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting; disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council; and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency regularly scheduled joint meeting for Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity and are livestreamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaf. Public comments can be made in person and also can be received per the following methods. Written comments may be dropped off in a drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityoftaft.org. They may be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, and all comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Chavera, followed by the invocation from Joey Pittman. If you would join us, please.
Please join me in honoring our American flag. Brian Overhart, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray as far ahead. God, we're so thankful for your grace, your mercy, your wisdom. So excited that in our community that we desire and ask God and start of our meetings to bless and move. So, God, we pray that today, God, just you see things we don't. You understand all things. We're thankful for that. So, we ask that blessing tonight in Jesus' name, and we said, "Amen."
Amen.
Thank you very much, Joe. Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Noor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrup.
Here.
Councilmember Chavera.
Here.
And Councilmember Bryant is absent with notice.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's begin with item number one, citizen requests public comments. Do we have anybody signed up? We do indeed. All right. This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Council may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit your comments to five minutes. First person up here would be Dennis McLean. If you would step up, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
Dennis McLean.
Nice catch, Dennis.
Address 11330 Snow Road, Bakersfield, California. Thank you for letting me speak. Good evening, council members and attending staff. I am here tonight in support of the Election Integrity Group and Kern Citizens for Freedom and to expose our county, state, and national flawed election process. For over 20 years, our leaders have allowed inaccurate voter rolls, ballot harvesting, and worst, computer tabulators, better known as the Chinese Dominion machines. These machines have been proven to be linked to the Internet and have monitored by corrupt parties. Kern County is on the verge of renewing this yearly contract for $240,000. The citizens of Kern County must unite in opposition to this wasteful spending and give control back to the citizens. We must return to in-person voting with paper ballots, hand counting with smaller precincts, and most important, voter ID required. I urge this council and TAF citizens to join our push for this change. If we do not have a fair election, we have no future for our children or grandchildren. In closing, the next Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting is next Tuesday, the 28th, at 9:00 a.m. This issue is on the agenda, and we encourage people to attend. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much, sir. Next up, Cameron Lormer. Cam, if you may, step on up here, sir.
Once again, might as well on the same lines, similar comments, but I'll go through because there's a few things a little different. I want to talk about some possible arguments that we have related to the machines. But anyway, first off, my name is Cameron Lormer. I reside at 13418 Dolly Avenue in Bakersfield. I'm a previous resident of Taft. I am a Kern citizen. I've worked most of my life out here in the western side of Kern County. I know many of the people that are here. And I had the pleasure, and I do, I'm here with a group called New California State. And so I'm representing them to a certain extent, but I come forth before you as a citizen, fellow citizen. So, once again, February 28th, what I am actually asking is that the TAF City Council consider adopting a, you know, querying with your people, but consider adopting a resolution which would reject the machines and funding for the machines. Funding for the machines is taxpayers', and I'm going to go through a couple of arguments because that money belongs to the taxpayers and the will of the taxpayers. Now, I was here for the last couple of weeks, several times. I interviewed and discussed with many, many people here in TAF, the good people of TAF. And two things that I found when we talked about elections. The first one was no machines. And we're not talking just Dominion. We're talking all electronic machines. The second one is, we want paper ballot voting. We want one-day voting. So, these are some of the elements that we're looking at. Now, I've done some work. There's a number of various groups that are out here. They're looking at analytics. They're looking at this. They've got a number of initiatives that are going forth. So, you have a very large group of people working on the same thing. What I would like to say, and just to give you some current news, back in January, KGET performed a survey on Dominion machines. The results of that survey, which was just under 1,000 people, 80% said no to machines. Okay, so that's one thing. You're talking about other citizens. Shasta County here, just recently, in the month of January, their county supervisors voted against renewing Dominion machines. We just recently have a fraud that was uncovered in San Joaquin because you have two sides. Are the machines, or is it in the process of the ballots, the way that they're managed, that they're mailed in? So, San Joaquin, we do have an arrest for extensive voter fraud. One of those guys happens to be a city supervisor. And nothing against you guys, but, so anyway, his con. Now, he's arrested. Some very interesting things that the sheriff said, and I recommend you look that up. That's very recent, the last week. One of the things that the sheriff said is, "We did not know anything. We primarily work with criminal law, and we don't know much about election law," right? So, they had to go back and learn that. And they said, you know, we don't, they had to learn that, and they had to go through all of the steps because they're primarily work around penal codes. So, this was a learning experience, but they said if there's a crime that's taking place, we have to learn how to deal with it. So, you see a number of other counties. There are four or five other counties that are doing similar type things, and I hope that Kern County does that. And the importance of TAF to Kern County, to me, is at the very high end because you guys, there is no Kern County without Taft. And so I just want to say thank you for all of that to the good citizens of Taft. So, that's kind of the new news. I want to get, let you know of some of the other things that have been going. So, I look at the arguments that are coming out of this. So, people are looking at these machines, and they're trying to prove that the machines don't work. Okay, they say. But when you look at it, you can't look into them. You can't do a forensic audit on them. These machines, you cannot touch them. And who has custody over that? A third-party contractor. Now, we, our taxpayer money is going to renew these machines. What I'm saying is, the sentiment of the people here is, we do not want the machines. That money is not government money. It's the money of the taxpayers. So, that needs to be looked at, the will of the people. And I'll get into that here a little bit further. So, a couple of things that we did, I looked at that, and several of my other people. We also got the voter rolls. We did a cursory look, and we're not done. This is in progress, but this is going back a year and a half, two years. So, I can tell you right now, I've got 100 domicile declarations, which more or less, by voter code, that's 100 people that can't vote. That's just from looking very quickly at election rolls. So, that's one piece of it. On November 3rd of 2020 election, we had just over 13,000 people that received their voter registration on that day. Now, does it mean that there's a problem there? Maybe not. But when you compare it to other counties, nothing had that kind of ratio. So, it's something that needs to be explained. So, I do want to say that there is additional investigation needs to continue on with all the groups and the various parties. I'm looking right now to the city council of Taft to query your people, talk to them, see what they want, and possibly put together a resolution to, one, pull the plugs on the machines, which we can do right now, and to, two, start moving towards the process of a proven voting system, which we've already had in the past. Couple of things that you need to know. So, what I did is I said, "Okay, we can't look in the machines, can't see what's going on." So, I filed three foias with the Kern County clerks. The first one was back January 25th of 2022. So, I asked for certain things like certifications. Show me the certifications. Show me the maintenance records. Show me all of these. Now, they came back to me, and what they told me is, "We don't have any of those records. Go see the state." So, the first question I ask is, why are our county supervisors endorsing a new contract for $225,000 for machines that are under their control in our county? That's the first thing. I don't know how they can do that. To me, that's not good business practice.
I don't want to interrupt you, Cam, but I need you to wrap it up.
Okay, real quick. So, anyway, I have another foyer. We covered that on Chinese. That's also national security, and that's being worked in your grids and that kind of stuff. And lesser magistrates, if you're not familiar with that, I'm going to read this really quick. Let's see. So, lesser magistrates, by virtue of their office, constitute lawful authority when the lesser magistrate stands against unjust or immoral law made by a superior while actions benefit those under his jurisdiction as well as all the nation as a whole. An example of this would be for a mayor or city council to protect those under their localized authority from immoral decrees from the governor, the Congress, or state legislature. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate your time. There's more, but we'll get to it next time.
I'm sure is. Thank you very much for coming before the council. We appreciate you taking the time. All right, next up would be Rob Dochow for, oh, boy, this is a great subject. Everybody wants to hear about this one, natural gas prices.
Good evening, Mayor Noor and city council members. My name is Rob Duco. I'm Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company here in Kern County. I'm here tonight to talk to you about something I emailed you about in January. I apologize to the new council members. You weren't on my list yet, but you'll get the next update, and something I've talked to Mayor Noor about a few weeks ago when I saw him at an event. And that's so-called gas bills. I'm here with an update. I know this has been on top of mind for many of our customers and your constituents who have been receiving recent bills that are higher than historical norms. Market prices for natural gas have dropped significantly in February when compared to January, but they still remain well above last year in historical averages. The core rate that we charge our customers changes each month and reflects the price SoCalGas pays for natural gas on the market when we purchase it for our customer. SoCalGas does not set the price of natural gas. Rather, we, those prices are determined by the national and regional markets. SoCalGas buys gas in those markets on behalf of our customers, and the cost of buying that gas is billed to our customers with no markup, meaning SoCalGas does not profit from the movement of prices when there's a volatile market, as there has been, for the price of the commodity. I do have some good news to share. The California Public Utilities Commission recently approved the acceleration of the California Climate Credit, which will give our customers, they did this in response to the unprecedented high prices, and it'll mean credit for our customers on an upcoming bill. It'll be a $50.77 credit on either their February or March bill, depending on the timing of their billing cycle. We also continue to have several ways to help income-qualified customers through our bill assistance and forgiveness programs, home improvement assistance, and level pay program. SoCalGas is also delaying collection activities on overdue residential customers until April 1, and we will have discontinued disconnecting residential customers until after at least July 1. We've also delayed non-residential disconnections until after March 1. In addition, SoCalGas recently donated $1 million to the Gas Assistance Fund, which is a program to help income-qualified customers pay their natural gas bills. There's more on that program and our other assistance programs on our website at socalgas.com/assistance. Some tips to help our customers. We encourage them to lower their thermostat by three to five degrees if their health permits, wash their clothes in cold water, reduce the temperature on their water heater, and limit the use of nonessential gas appliances such as spas, pool heaters, and fireplaces. More information on these tips is available also on our website at socalgas.com-managehigherbills. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have now, if it's appropriate, or at a later time, if you wish.
As this is a community benefit discussion, do any council members have any questions for Rob? He's right here.
I'll have a few questions on that. Is there anything for the middle class, or below, for the... What's available for us, our working, or retired, or in the middle class? Is there any hope for them getting benefits from the program?
We have a level pay program, which is available to all residential customers. So, it evens out your bill over 12 months rather than having the spike of higher bills during the winter heating season.
So, you're just going to need the thing a little longer then? It's going to be the same if you just pay it the high amount one month, and three months later, it's a lot lower, so it might as well?
Right. You would pay the same amount over a 12-month period. It'd just be spread out in relatively equal payments.
And all the gas is coming from California, or are you have to import it in from other countries?
Most of our gas comes from outside California. Most of our sources is from west Texas. We have four pipelines that come in from east of here, two from west Texas, and two from a little farther north in the southern Rockies. And they bring the great majority of the gas we provide to our customers. Other gas comes from the northern Rockies in Canada. And a little bit, I think about 10% of the gas we provide to our customers comes from California, and most of that comes from Kern County.
Okay, then, is it because of our government, why we're not, or our state legislatures don't? We can't get more from our California gas, or is it stopping?
I don't know about that. This is historical. It's not a recent decrease. And I know, I think I know where you're going with the reduction of the oil drilling. Most of the natural gas produced in California is residual from oil drilling as opposed to being directly drilled for natural gas.
Do you want to have any coming in from other countries, or it's all produced in the United States?
I believe Canada is the only country from which we import natural gas.
Excellent. Okay. I have one more question, but I noticed the increase and stuff. You know, I just recently retired, and so it's going to affect me a little more. But, you know, I'm financially fine, but I do watch my expenditures a little bit more closely than I normally do. But so, I just like to make sure we're all getting a fair shake, you know, because it seems like a lot of things are, it goes to the lower income, and the middle class is paying the most of the burden of all the taxes and all the programs and stuff. It's like there's going to be a relief for us, not to see you in general as a gas company, but in all the different programs that's entitlement that we're not getting. But that's all I have to say, and thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Waldrup?
You said you're with Southern California Gas?
Correct.
And I'm getting PG&E?
Right. Most of Taft is served by PG&E. We do have a handful of customers here in the city.
Of Southern gas?
Of Southern California gas, right.
Now, are you saying that if you're on PG&E, you could switch over?
No.
Okay.
It's where the pipelines are. The pipeline in front of your street determines who serves your home.
That answers mine. Thank you.
They do have a large presence. They have a yard on Gas Company Road. So, they're right across the street. Councilman Chavera, do you have any questions or any statements?
No, I think that he actually took my question, so...
Okay. All right. Well, Rob, thank you very much for coming before us all, and I believe that it is good news that the cost is going down somewhat. But just to clarify, I would think, a lot of people would think you would have long-term contracts, and you wouldn't be forced to purchase gas on the spot market during these rapid declines and descents of the price of gas. Would you care to elaborate just a little bit?
I believe we do have a number of procurement methods, and I can get more information for you on that. I don't, that's something I don't know off the top of my head, but I do believe that.
All right. Well, thanks for taking the time to come before the council and the people.
Okay.
Appreciate your time. Thank you now.
Thank you.
All right. That finishes up our citizen requests public comments, period. Next up, council statements, non-action. Councilman Waldrup, I'll begin with you, sir, this evening.
I'd like to give kudos to the Quanis Club. Let everybody that don't know, they got this little project that they go out on all of the special occasions, holidays, and puts the flags out, and they're doing a very good job. They get them up, get them down, and it's not that much of a cost. We need more people out there doing this to make the whole street all lined up with the flags, which would be really nice. Secondly, Lions Club, we sponsor Unity Thrift. They're an organization that, at our clubhouse, have fundraisers selling whatever. And they take all that money, all of it, and they get dogs and cats spayed and neutered free. So, keep driving by, stop, and see if you can buy anything, and help out these service clubs. Thank you.
All right. You bet. Thank you, sir. Councilman Chavera?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So, if you don't mind, Councilman, he was telling me that Kenny had passed away. I don't remember his last name, but Kenny used to be...
Kenny Wright?
Wright?
Wright.
Yes, Kenny Wright. If you remember, he would drive around locally in his moped. And he recently passed away, and most of the community was familiar with Kenny. I remember him when I was in high school, and we played sports. You can count on Kenny always going to the sporting events out of town. I know that his funeral service is coming up, and there'll be more to come for that. But I would encourage those of you who knew Kenny to attend his funeral. A super great guy and definitely a loyal citizen to our community. I also wanted to make you guys aware of that it's phrase TC Male Summit. And it's basically some staff members from TAF College. They're male and male staff members of Taft High. And what they've discovered, TAF has discovered that we have a significant decreasement in male enrollment, and for a variety of reasons. Right, I heard that. So, yeah, but it's important for us to be aware of this and encourage our young male to get involved and understand the importance of an education. So, if you know of any student that is being challenged academically and is interested in going to college, please reach out to TAF College and Taft High School. So, I was listening to the gentleman here. I was thinking of a quote by Franklin D. Roosevelt, and this is what it states. "Let us never forget that our government is ourselves and not an alien power over us. The ultimate rulers of our democracy are not a president and senators and congressmen and government officials, but the voters of this country." So, I just wanted to share with you guys and remember that. That's it, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Cryer?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things I want to talk about. First of all, is I agree with Councilman Waldrup that service clubs are very important in all communities. And it's real important, you know, the Quanis did a great job, the Road Reader on Napoleon, and you got the Seropetis. You've got a lot of great organizations, even our own town. But we need to get more new folks and stuff involved in those things because once those things cease, or they close down, the suffer the most is our young folks, our people who are not getting scholarships or any programs, new helmets for high school, or baseball bats. We're not going to get that stuff for our folks, young folks that can get some wholesome sports. That's well-needed for all of our kids. The other thing is, watch out, it's cold now outside. You're going to see a lot of homelessness, going inside buildings, starting fires, getting out of control, burn them down, either purposely or unintentional. If you're out there seeing things that don't look unusual, report it to the police. It's better to have them call them as a false alarm and double-check than not do it and cause a fire and affects another business or another home where somebody, you know, God forbid, get injured or get killed. So, I encourage everybody to be diligent in watching things. This is our community. You want to make sure everybody stays safe and everything. The third thing I was going to talk about is election integrity. I like to make sure when I vote, it counts. I like it, I'm a little on the old-fashioned ways. I like to have, mark the, fill in the circle of who I vote for or the different propositions I vote for. I don't trust electronic machines and stuff. Ever since they started, how long? Ever since they started, how long do you have to wait to find the results? Weeks? Three weeks? And it always, it changes so much, and you know, it seems like when it gets real close, when it's ahead by X amount, and all of a sudden, I guess the numbers get dwindled less and less and less. That has a concern for me, where the old-fashioned way, this one-day deal is done, everybody knows who won the election. You know, it might be too close a call, then you do a recount, but it's there, black and white, and, but right now, I just don't trust how long is it taking, and what is happening to the, to the equipment, you know, to the, our voting process, because I value it, it's very important to all of us, because once you don't trust what your vote counts, then that's end of our democracy, our constitutional republic. It is not gonna be there for us, because nobody, not gonna believe it. Another thing, too, the overseas, they watch our election with these machines and stuff, and I think we're the only country left that uses electronic, have these machines. They all went back the old way, and it's important, you know, it tells you something. Why are we using machines that nobody else don't want to use? Why are we one of the only countries that don't require voter ID? That's another question I throw at, you know, because I want my, I want to make sure there's one man and woman, or any other things in between. That vote counts. That's important to our constitution and to our republic. And another thing, too, is the county is renegotiating, because our contract ended with the electronic voting machine in this county, and do we want our county to not renew it, or change to another company? I think we need, as citizens, here in our great city here, in Kern County, to be the next county, other than Shafter, to renounce the electronic machines and go back to the old way on the paper voting deal, have more faith and trust in there, and it's all accountable. Where we do electronic, you get your vote, you have no idea, it's all in the machine, and you have no idea if it counted or not counted. I know there are some safeguards in our county, I know about that, but can you trust results? I might get a little long-winded here, but I'm getting close to the end on here, but I think we need to, I'm losing my train of thought, excuse me, but it's very passionate for me to change where we get integrity back in our deal, because what I was trying to say is, there's a lot of this in our elections in the last few, last 20 years, 14 years, people are getting fed up with it, they're getting tired, and I am tired, too, and I want to make sure that we get the support that's needed, and talk to your supervisor, whichever district you're in, or send letters to them, if you please. We need to look, investigate it, and go back to the old way that worked and been proven. I know there's a meeting on the 28th of this month, I'm not sure if they're gonna vote on that day, that they're gonna renew it or not, but that could be for further discussions. I know there's been several meetings going on, and I think that we just need to act on it, myself and citizens here, and that's all I have to say. I know it's not held too long, but you know, I'm a little passionate about it, and I like to say something.
You needn't apologize about passion. If you weren't passionate, you wouldn't be involved in the people's government, which, that is right, this is the people's government, and we tell people all the time, please come here, join us, this is your government, and you should be a decision-maker, and you are, and you are with your vote, and oftentimes in the state of California, unfortunately, people vote with their feet, which is why we've had immigration from the state of California for the past three years in a row. We can stay, and we can make it right, be a part of it, it's your government, and then lastly, government has no money. It's the people's money. So I agree with that wholeheartedly. Rain's coming, everybody, we got more of it coming. Hallelujah. Isn't that wonderful? I mean, prior to this winter season coming, there were a lot of the climate change experts that said we'd never see it again, and we're all just gonna shrivel up and die. Now we're getting more and more of it, and there's more on the way. Along with that, because Randy Miller is no longer up on this dais, I'll remind everybody that it's getting green out there, but the weeds are growing, and the easiest time to kill weeds is when they're small, because the taller they get, the tougher they are to deal with. So you might want to go ahead and take advantage of the opportunity to get rid of them. I was fortunate enough, the other night, this was Sunday night, to come back in town and catch the last 20 minutes of my grandchildren's Little League practice, and it reminded me of how many young people are down there in the Franklin Field complex because of Little League. A lot of them, and they're excited little folks, and when it was time for practice finally to be over, in spite of the fact that they're running around wearing each other out, out there on the baseball fields, they were full of excitement, headed towards the cars, and they go running across that street while their parents yell for them to wait, watch, look both ways, so they're out there. Baseball season is upon us, Little League is upon us. If you find yourself traveling down through that Franklin Field area, please be aware, there's a lot of little people out there, and take your time, go slow. If you're in a hurry, then go up and over Elk Hills and get on the highway, but don't speed through that area, please. Lastly, I'm gonna take the opportunity to wish a very important person within our team here a very happy birthday. This is a guy who wouldn't make a deal of the fact that he was born on this day, and I'm not gonna tell me how many years ago he was born, but he hadn't been on the face of this earth nearly as long as I have, and it was after an extensive search that the former city council made one of the smartest moves we've ever made, we decided to make that man our city manager. So Craig Jones, you all join me in saying, "Happy Birthday, Craig Jones."
Thank you.
All right, happy birthday, sir.
No sombrero.
Okay. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you all very much. Next up, Planning Commission reports. We have Planning Commissioner here to enlighten us.
Good evening, Mayor Nor, members of the City Council. Gary Livingston, Planning Commissioner, here to report on our most recent Planning Commission meeting. It was held the day after our previous city council, as we usually try to do. Two major items were on the agenda. We had a continued public hearing, which was a tentative map, parcel map subdivision, including a piece of property where the Dollar General was proposed along Airport Road.
Garnerfield Road.
Yeah. I don't know why I do that, but...
No problem.
The brain just doesn't get to the right road anymore.
Garnerfield Road, everybody.
Garnerfield Road, it's a different, different airfield. A little older. And along with that was some cleanup. It's one of the unusual things about older cities, is that there's always some little small piece of a property that nobody figured it out why it's that way, but we get a little edge piece that's going, going to go to Caltrans and the, again, to the edge of 119 that should have been dedicated probably some time ago, but will be dedicated now, plus dedications along Garnerfield Road to make sure that the expansion of the road matches for the retail proposed along that area, as the city grows in that direction. And then the other item on the agenda, which we'll eventually be coming to you with a recommendation to send on to Housing and Community Development, is the state, is our Department of Housing and Community Development Annual Progress Reporting. Basically, the requirement to make reports on housing production. The city has got plenty of land to build on, and that's usually the most important issue for most cities. Ours is actually having people come and actually do the building, so you'll see that there's plenty of land in a later report that we do, but only a few houses built in the last couple of years. One of the things we're hoping that, as we keep working on plans, making corrections to certain parts of the zoning code, that that will encourage more and newer housing development, something that's definitely needed in the community. But that should come to you in one of the next few city council meetings, is the information item to be approved and sent on to the state, and that's it for this month's report.
All right. Thank you very much for coming for the council, appreciate it, Jerry. Next up, item number four, department reports. Do we have any department reports this evening?
Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. Our chief, Damon McMinn, is gonna address the council.
Thank you, Mayor. City Councilman, Madam Clerk, City Manager Jones, City Attorney Jason Apperson, how are you guys all doing this evening? I'm gonna go with the stats that we have for our police department. We did have total incidents of 813, calls for service, which are up a little bit at 438, and we don't mind that, because we do assist the Kern County Sheriff's Department in the county areas quite often, and we have a good rapport with them, and we love doing so. Our officer-initiated incidents are 375, traffic stops at 55, and what I like the most is our vehicle and ped checks, we had 49 this month, and these are the months, sorry, these are the January statistics. Total officer reports, 135, total misdemeanor and felony arrests of 68. We had 54 misdemeanor arrests and 14 felony arrests. So what I enjoy is to see my people out working, the troops out working, and I enjoy being their boss, and I enjoy working for the city of Taft.
And we enjoy having you and your entire team here, chief.
At all.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, thanks for your report. I was thinking of you the other day, incidentally, because I was reading an article about what's going on in Austin, Texas. Austin, Texas is now one of the largest tech hubs in the United States of America. They say they export more tech than they do out of the Silicon Valley. On top of that, they also voted aggressively to defund the police, and their city is descending into anarchy. I mean, it's terrible. There was recently an incident whereby in one of the most critical intersections, a portion of their infrastructure was taken over by street outlaws and the drag racing and the mayhem that ensued, multiple damaged police vehicles trying to control it and break it up. They have a huge deficit regarding their staffing, they cannot get people to come to work for them. Can you imagine badmouthing an entire department and then not knowing why people don't want to work for that department? Is that not a mind blower? So I bring these things up because that nightmare is repeating itself, and people are learning of the fallacy of that ridiculousness, and that would be defunding the police. What we want, we are a law-abiding community, we're a community of laws, we're a country of laws, and we want quality people out there seeing to the public safety, and we appreciate your work, sir, and the work of your team every day, so thank you very much. Next up, City Manager's Statements. City Manager, on your birthday, Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, no statement other than I appreciate the birthday.
All right, thanks, sir. City Attorney's Statements, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no statement.
All right. Item number seven, Future Agenda Requests, gentlemen.
I do have a request, Mayor.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to request that we do a resolution to, excuse me, I'm getting a little too old a little bit on the, being a little cheaters here. To the resolution, the recommendation is that Kern County does not renew its contract with the electronic voting system, and instead investigate other options for carrying out our county elections. There's many reasons why on there, because large majority of the people don't trust our machines anymore. They've seen in the past what's happened, and they don't trust it, and they like, they like to go back the old way, that worked for hundreds of years, that worked, and that's why I believe, and people believe, and there's so many other issues. I do have a resolution that I would like to share with you, not to read it here, but with the city clerk and stuff, if it's approved, I'll get concurrence.
Okay, well, right now, if you want a future agenda request, sir, you state that desire, and then if you get concurrence from a council member, then that will move forward regarding the information that you have. The time for that would be after this.
Next one.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, I'd get concurrence in order.
I will give concurrence.
All right, then. We have a request, and we have concurrence. Madam Clerk?
I have.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Protem Cryer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other gentleman? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward then. This, next up, Consent Calendar, items eight through 11. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing none, those items are: Item number eight, the minutes for the February 7, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting. Item number nine, the payment of bills, some $105,000 worth. Item number 10, CalPERS Holiday Employer Compliance Review. Recommendation is a motion to accept and file the Holiday Pay Review, Employer Compliance Review dated February 2023. Lastly, item number 11 is the monthly report for Kern County Station 21, much like the report just given to us by our police chief. Receive and file the monthly report for January 2023 from Kern County Fire Station 21. Does any council member wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
No.
Hearing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items eight through 11.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Cryer?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Chivara?
Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes, that's approved on a 4-0 vote, with Councilmember Bryant being absent. Thank you. That brings the open session portion of this meeting to a close. This council will be going into closed session for two items. Item A is the conference with real property negotiator Craig Jones, city manager, Government Code Section 5495 6.8 Undisclosed Parcel, and Item B, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Government Code Section 5495 6.9B, One Potential Case. I want to thank you all for being here, being a part of your government. I wish you all well, travel safely. Good evening.